Can you hear us, Sarah?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Call the Board of the Regular Council Meeting, Monday, August 2nd, 7:01 PM. Vohk.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen? Candy Davis?
Yes.
Shaw? Paul Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Langen and Shaw are excused tonight. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Information appropriate meeting notice.
Meeting was noticed on July 30th at John's Post in Hope House Library, City Hall and City Website.
Thank you. The Council of Acceptance of the General.
You want me to accept?
Accept.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. Next item is public hearing. The County Council holds a public hearing to hear comments regarding the special assessments for Dairyland Drive Street, Storm Sewer, and Sidewalk Construction. And before we open the public hearing, will the city administrator give some background?
The owner developer of the parcel on the west side of Dairyland Drive opposes to constructing apartment building. Dairyland Drive is the road that intersects with Lake Drive near the Veterans Veterinary Clinic there. The city may recall built 300 feet of Lake Drive as part of its district to get to the back of the properties and face on Lake Drive. So this extension is a 100-foot extension from that existing end of that road. The proposed special assessment would be for street storm sewer sidewalks and water. But the property or the right of way is fronted on by two different owners of either side, so the cost would be split between those two owners. The schedule of breakdown of the costs is in your packet. While not exactly the same, Brailsford Junction, if you may recall, that was a special assessment street also. The city was really the driver on that road entirely. That was a very large special assessment to the two owners that were fronting on the Brailsford Junction. In that instance, there was, you provided 10-year special assessment at three and a half percent interest, but you gave a five-year deferral of the payments during that time period. Interest did not accumulate. So the schedule of the cost is in your packet as well as a map showing the cost, the breakdown of the cost.
Okay, thank you. And we will officially open the public hearing. If there's anyone that wishes to speak on this, please go to the podium and state your name and address and make sure Sarah can hear us in the out there. The what?
Well. I'll hook them up. But they're chickens.
Is this right up?
Yes, right up. Can you hear me?
Yes. Thank you.
Jennifer Janitek. My husband owns one of the parcels, and that's an awful big assessment. We've been trying to sell our land over there for the last 10 years, and no one's been buying it. And even at the price that we have it, which is less than the cost we have into it, and another $50,000, $60,000, we'll never get back from that land or anything that we have. So we just can't afford it. And so I'm just kind of wondering, it's not really benefiting us at all, but we're having to pay the $60,000 next to it. So that's the DEV LLC. So I'm not sure who's benefiting from it, but it's not, that's an awful large assessment. Do you need any other information? I don't know, David or Shaw, do you have anything to add?
I just wanted to find information for my mother-in-law.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we will officially close the public hearing. And move on to consider adoption of the City of Edgerton Resolution 1621, preliminary resolution declaring the city council's intentions for the Dairyland Drive extension to exercise special assessment police powers.
I think Cindy's getting a copy of the resolution that's in the packet, so I think that's where she is writing it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, getting one?
I think she's getting a copy of the actual resolution. We typically have in the packet, so I think she's getting a copy for you. The blanks that you would need to fill in if you choose to approve it are terms, rate, deferral, no deferral, those are the kinds of things that you usually know typically have to fill in on that.
We need that to be motioned a second before we discuss it, all right?
At this point, I would think so. There's been an explanation of what the issues are, so normally I would see if we have some preliminary background for that.
Okay.
Thank you, Cindy. I'll make motion to through the adoption of City of Edgerton Resolution 16-21, preliminary resolution declaring the city council's intentions for the Dairyland Drive extension to exercise special assessment police powers.
A second.
Motion is second. We have some blanks.
Yeah, well, I figured we'd do the motion so we could have the discussion. That's what we just said.
Yeah. That's fine. That's what we're supposed to do.
Sorry, Bill. I'm going to lower my bar.
Okay, so you want to go down to number four with blanks or?
Sure.
Okay, just for discussion, we're still on discussion stage, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. What, I mean, having heard the public comments, what's an optional? I mean, this is normal policy, split 50/50? Or not 50/50, but split between all landowners?
Right, if the adjoining property will have now an improved 100 feet of improved street frontage, so it would be customary that adjoining property owners pay for that. Your options are you would require the developer pay for the whole thing. Developer is the owner of the land on the west side. He's pursuing, as you will see coming through your agenda soon, the development of his property. So that would be an option, and that may be enough to not have that development occur. That would be up to the developer. But it is customary that people who benefited pay for the street.
Okay, the key word being benefit.
Mm-hmm. So this adjoining property will have a street curb gutter that they don't have now.
Which, if I go back to some of your concerns.
Would that be the guy with the apartment complex? He would have to pay for it then? Because it wouldn't benefit the people that have the land for sale that haven't been able to sell it. They want to put their drive in there for the apartment complex. Isn't that what she just stated?
The road is required. The road is required for the development of your property or the adjoining property. That would be a requirement. So the definition of benefit is a definition, really a statutory definition that says if you have an improvement, if you get an improvement that you don't pay for, you are benefited by that improvement. So that's, that is what the statutes allow for the city council to assess those costs to you for an improvement that doesn't exist that will exist.
And I wonder if that improvement may indeed help with the sale of the property?
It will not.
Because?
We've been trying to sell below market. We blow what we have in it right now, and no one's, put extra money in it right now would just kill us. I mean, it's just, it's not going anywhere.
So you said, well, I guess it's like you, below market or below what you have into it?
Below what we have into it. Well, below what we pay for.
Yeah, I get it.
So I mean, so we've already lost a couple hundred thousand on that part of land over the time that we've had it, we've been trying to sell it. So I mean, this would just, I think it should go to the person that's benefiting from the apartment buildings or something because we're not benefiting at all.
Well, we can't do storm sewer and gutter on one half of the road. That makes no sense.
No.
Right? I get it. But to me, that's what that means. I mean, if you're talking, if you're on the opposite.
But it's, think of it, think of it from 100 feet is only like frontage for one lot. If we put one to one and a half, maybe two lots, if we put an additional $50,000 on those two, that's another $25,000 for each lot. You can't get that in Edgerton. We have not been able to sell the development land we have. So it's.
I thought we had developers that were banging down our doors for property, for lots to build on.
We have it with Joe Ferraro as a realtor. We've had it for, we've had six different realtors in the last eight years, so.
And I'm going to guess, I mean, I don't know, maybe you didn't understand what she said, but I think what I understood was she's not proposing it only be on half. She's proposing.
I get that.
Repay the whole thing.
I get that.
Not really an option, I think.
Right.
And what I'm going to also wonder if she's about to say is that having a proposed apartment complex nearby might actually not benefit the property. If you're looking to buy, we've been down this road many times, single-family homes versus apartments or rental properties near each other.
The company plan has.
Some people are in the impression that that's big time oil and water.
The company plan has multifamily development along that section.
But I'm just saying, I don't know, in this case, I think if there was houses already there and you didn't have curb and gutter, I could see where you valued the property because now it would make the house more appealing.
I don't, you wouldn't be, I have houses that are without curb and gutter today.
Well, just say you did. Say if the house is already there for the last 40 years. I mean, speaking as someone who does not have curb and gutter in front of the property, it does happen.
I'm not saying those are, that's not a good equal scenario.
What I'm saying is you could make the argument that it benefits their property if they weren't in the position they're in, which is at this point an empty lot that's not selling versus if there was already a home there, it would make me happy if they put curb and gutter in front of my house. I wish they would.
Sure.
But they're not.
How many lots is that?
We have 17 acres.
19.
19 acres. 19 acres.
So it's not like it would be one lot that they would have to assess.
We're trying to sell the 19 acres for like $200,000. And now you're putting another, I mean, and it's only, that's just, we'll just never get our money out of it. I mean, it's just kind of. I will sell it to the city if the city would like to buy. I mean.
Has the developer been approached about covering all the costs?
Well, I have developers fully aware of how streets get paid for, and most developers aren't going to pay for a street that doesn't benefit them. So we have a developer knows, that's why we're here.
Well, I'm not going to naff to move forward because that's going to stop development altogether. That could stop development altogether.
And.
I guess.
Sorry.
The way I'm thinking.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Hi, Candy, I would agree with you there. We're very much in the need for more housing options for people, and especially for the commuters that go to Madison every day. So I wouldn't want to stop this development from moving forward. I understand the, the, that the other owners had difficulty selling their property. I just, I personally find it hard to believe that development for more places, usually development spurs more development. So I would hate to set a precedent where that person has to incur all the costs, and then they do have a great opportunity, and then there's unfairness, and yeah.
So Attorney Morgan?
Yes.
Differeal is something that we've done in the past. Could be any rule why a special assessment could be deferred until someone either, until property sells or until someone takes access to those improvements without a timeline?
Till someone takes access.
Books up.
Oh, okay.
Uses the services, puts in a curb cut.
You know, the way that that is normally done, we work it into the development agreement, the developer pays for the entirety of it, and they recoup as successive folks tie into it. So we could propose that, yes.
That's when they.
That would be different than the city holding the cost, which is what my proposal was. Is there any limitation as to the city's deferring or requiring? Certainly, we would require anyone who connects to it would pay. The agreement we had on Brailsford was if someone connected, they paid the entire special assessment. So is there any limitation in that regard?
Open-ended forever. We will foot the bill, but recoup it from benefiting parties later. That's the proposal?
Or with a very long sunset.
And would there be any, it would be actual costs now, not carrying costs for interest, things like that, correct?
Oh, well, that would be for the council. If they deferred for a long time, they could assess interest. That might be a compromise.
So if we did that, and if doing that, would the city cover, carry the cost, you're saying?
Right. And Attorney Morgan is suggesting that the developer pay the entire cost, and then somehow there's an agreement to recoup that from the adjoining property owner at some point.
Oh, like a lot of sale? Yeah, I mean, what, you know.
Connection, sale.
Curb and gutter, what are the public improvements?
Street, storm sewer sidewalk, sewer and water is already in.
So what is the tie-in at that point? I mean, tie into the water, that's one tap in. Are we talking?
Curb cut. That's what you're using, street?
I think you could do that. You could assess at that time. We'd have to have a notice recorded attaching to this property so that purchasers or people considering purchase would be put on notice. It's really pushing the cost onto the later buyer. That may very well increase the attractiveness of that lot.
Right, that's right. The other thing, so we pay for, and I don't, and I'm not 100% sure, but does this property that they're developing benefit from the retention fund that we had to be 100% on?
No.
We don't have any rights.
What was that?
They have to build their own.
They have to build their own retention fund?
Is the 19 acres all one parcel?
They're split into two.
But it's adjoining. Are you interested? I'm sorry.
Okay, I don't like, I don't like.
I don't see the developer carrying the whole loan. I mean, if we're going to do this.
One, no, I don't.
And the city pays, carries that loan until they take care of their part, the developer pays for it. I don't see the developer paying the whole loan, waiting back to collect later.
No. I don't.
There's a sunset on those as well. Normally somewhere between 10 and 20 years is.
Okay, but I think if we're going to make that proposal, then we would carry the burden, not, I mean, I'm just saying, unless you're doing a total deferral, is that what you're saying? Total deferral for the 10?
No, no, I'm saying that oftentimes when you put in sewer in particular, or water mains in particular, they're, you have to extend them a great distance. You have a water main recruitment agreement with the developer, and they front the cost. City does not front the cost, and then they recoup it as individual properties tie in to it. This is the city fronting the cost and recouping it out of the property owners as they tie in. We'd have to figure out the mechanism, whether it's at closing or by taxes. The concern there is if they don't pay the taxes, somebody goes delinquent.
Okay, but you still want, you could put, right now, the developer's on the hook for the 50%, so the developer could still be on the hook for that, no?
Oh, yes.
And then do the other side. I'm not saying we carry the whole for the whole thing.
No, I don't think.
No, okay. Oh, I thought, okay, I thought that's what somebody was.
No, I don't, that wasn't my intention if I gave that first.
Okay.
But can we?
Yes.
Can we hit the one developer up to potentially be developing and not give them the same agreement that we potentially would give across the street? Or are we discriminating?
I'm sorry.
If we defer for five years across the street, do we have to defer for five years to one that's potentially getting built out soon?
I think they're realizing the benefit immediately.
Yeah.
As soon as they have approvals, I would think we could tie it to a development agreement, obviously, but as soon as they have approval. But if something happened and the development evaporated, then the deferral, you would have to offer the same deal, correct?
I would assume so.
Right. So, so yes, but the caveat would be that if there's any benefit, you know, someone's accessing it, then it becomes due.
For obvious reasons, I'd prefer the developer carrying the entire cost and recoup it later, but that does have chilling effect on development.
Let me just, I'm trying to avoid.
So how would one developer, you're saying?
Right.
I agree.
What you just said, basically, we would actually defer both. However, since the east side, east side?
It's not developing.
Yeah. Developer would realize his, as one has said, his profit, whatever you want to call it, improvement immediately. He then would be due right away, even though we did technically alter tone, it's there, but as soon as he builds, he has to pay it because he now benefited from.
That's the west side.
And the same would be with them, is that they were to sell the property in three years at a higher cost than what it was worth beforehand? Is that how you're going to figure it out? I don't think that the sale would be the trigger, although it's. Okay. Could be. It would be when the property is developed in some way, so curb cut, tying into the utilities, whatever that block is, it's usually, it's obviously on a linear footage normally.
I guess that's what I was going to say. How do we determine, if it doesn't sell, how do we determine that they have benefited?
Well, if it doesn't sell, we're assuming they haven't.
So it's kind of determined on sale.
The improvement itself, by statutory definition, is you benefited the property by making the improvement.
That is correct. They are, if this road goes in or this is improved, they are by definition benefiting. We can assess all of it or none of it, or some ratio in between.
I think we're looking at assessing all of it, just how.
Understood.
Is that right? How and what?
Yes.
I mean, and again, if we're going to offer the same deferral, it won't matter because
I mean, and again, if we're gonna offer the same deferral, it won't matter because if they develop on the other side, we're gonna get it as soon as they start. And if the other, your side doesn't, the other side doesn't, east, west, whatever, doesn't, we're still gonna put it off five, 10 years, whatever we want to defer, correct?
But in the meantime, interest would accrue on that.
Well, not necessarily. I just, no. It's one of the things that we
Coming from the
This is a hard pill for some here to swallow, maybe that might be easier, that it's like, okay, we argued a deferral for a number of years, however.
Okay.
We're not doing it for free.
Which we did, Brailsford, five years, no interest, and then five years to pay it.
Actually, 10.
10, 10 after that.
Five years of deferral, 10 years on that last one. Do we have a copy of that one?
The Brailsford resolution.
The other, the one you were before with blanks.
It's mentioned in the staff report.
On the number, I just didn't see the blank.
Did you get, did you get a copy of the resolution? The call that you handed was down.
Oh.
Maybe you're more than one. Thank you.
Well, I mean, I don't know how we're gonna, I'm just gonna say, I'm, I'm very much in favor of the development. I just am not real keen on slamming the special assessment on property owners that aren't going to have any real benefit at this point. I think it's a sort of an undue burden that they don't they can't realize the benefit at some point. I mean, it's something they made, and we can recoup that. As long as the deferral exists and we've used it before, I'd be in favor of using it here.
So in retrospect, I think the opposite, I think that they are getting benefit from it because when if they will be selling the property, it's set to go. So, I mean, to look at it, I guess, depends on what you think the benefit is, but
Well, basically, we, statutorily, we have to look at it that they have benefit once it moves in.
Correct.
I mean, statutes, whether we want to argue whether they benefit or not, our statute says they are. So basically, all we can do with is after that, how we're gonna deal with the assessment. Opinion or not, whether they benefit, statutorily, they have, just citywide, I mean, statute, so.
Similar to the argument we have with sidewalks.
You see what I'm saying?
Times that don't pay. So. I don't walk on the sidewalk, so it doesn't benefit me.
Right, right.
I understand. But again, we can deal with deferral in the past. That seems to be, this would be as good
But every situation is different.
Along with the deferral.
Why we deferred before versus now. I'm not saying we should or shouldn't, I'm just saying because we deferred in the past, the situation may have been different.
It may have been, but
You're saying you agree with deferral? I'm all over that. Oh, yeah, no, I'm on that. I'm agreeing they benefit, but I'm going with a deferral.
Is there a
Because of the type.
I think the time, you think the deferral would be as appropriate?
This last one, look, Brailsford Junction looked fine, didn't it?
That was five years.
Five-year deferral, then 10 years payments. Interest rate might have to change.
And at the end of the 15, it just is no longer recoupable?
They even started year five.
Oh.
You started at the end of five.
Brailsford was, yes, five-year deferral, unless there was a connection, that they paid right away. And if not, then they even started, and then there was a 10-year amortization after that.
Gotcha.
So if the property is sold before that five years, that five years goes with the property?
The assessment would go with the property. The assessment wouldn't, in this case, the deferral, if it transfers final bills, they have to be paid.
You could You could structure it that way, you could structure it as, I thought you were dealing with a development. And development being defined as building permits, cuts.
So not until access, because they have to be paid in full, otherwise it's on the payments.
Would someone like to put that in a motion form, at least the deferral part?
We already have a motion that's currently standing.
No, the motion has
Be defended.
Yeah. But the motion was to
Assess.
Adopt the resolution.
Correct.
But there, but we can't adopt the resolution in one motion and then the payment or the terms in another?
You gotta do the terms first.
Okay.
As an amendment.
Okay.
Yes.
And then after we get all the blanks filled in, we go back and do the original motion.
Okay, I see.
So the amendment would be?
It wouldn't be an amendment, it would be a motion for the terms, right? Is that what you just said?
Amendment. I'm saying
It's an amendment.
Which means that the person making the motion has to make the amendment?
No, no, any, anyone can.
Okay, gotcha.
So basically, we'd make an amendment to defer payments for five years, defer interest and payments for five years, and then start a payment plan for 10 years.
Correct, unless sold or developed.
Unless ground broke or whatever, right?
Access.
Access, that's what we're, access, unless access prior to either one of these.
Right, so that kills the whole deal, access stops everything?
They start, they do get paid off.
Well.
Then what do you want to do on this sale? Do you want to do on the sale, or do you want to be able to be carried over to the next property owner?
If your motion was access, then that would mean, unless you said access or sale, otherwise it would just be when someone takes
I heard sale matching laws would be a toy in there, so.
It's good to clarify.
Not for me.
One takeback. And you also need to sign a percentage.
It's 2%.
Couldn't that be read back?
I'm sorry.
Was that as a motion yet?
Yeah, yeah, that was, I'm sorry, that was my motion for amendment, my motion to amend.
I'll second. I'll second it.
Ramona was writing, I don't know if you were writing, I was looking at Ramona.
I'm, I'm writing, I didn't hear, did you set up?
2%.
2%? Thank you, I didn't hear that part.
Okay.
All did, all did second, so. Let's, let's have the motion read back.
Okay, so the motion is to amend Resolution 1621 by adding five-year deferral without interest with a 10-year amortization, payment in full upon access to development and with a 2% interest rate.
So why do we call 2%?
Because I just threw that out there.
No, I hear it. Seriously, because we're looking at the way we have this other one, that's why, I'm just trying to figure out. Okay, that's right.
Interest rates are around that, right?
They are. That's what we're using for our other loans, for the home development or redevelopment and whatnot, we're using that for other issues, and we use it for the sidewalk out there.
Okay, fair.
Just, we use this on Lower Street, so just went with 2%.
Good.
Clarification on the 10-year, that starts after the five-year, the amortization.
Do we have a five-year?
First five years are interest-free.
Correct, interest, yeah, it says interest deferred.
And payment-free.
Interest-free, I just want to make clear.
Five-year deferral payments and no interest accumulation. Is the way it should read.
And then 10 years to pay it after that.
With, yeah, 10-year amortization is what you wrote, right? Yep, that's, that's 2%.
Unpaid installments at 12%, as is currently listed?
Yes. Yeah, that's in there, that's in there.
Okay, any discussion? Sarah, did you catch all that?
I believe so, yes.
No further discussion? Rule call.
Burdick?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
No.
Okay, motion passes, the amendment motion passes 3 to 1. And now we go back to the original motion to adopt the resolution. Any discussion on that?
So by agreeing to, agreeing to adopting the resolution, that is agreeing to the resolution with those terms that we just set. Okay, thank you.
So for discussion's sake, what was the note for? What part didn't you like? Okay.
No, right now, no.
Oh, okay, well, I mean, before we get back to the original motion?
Oh, nothing, no.
Oh, okay.
No, I just, I feel that it's land, people and developers especially, they want to build. We need to have more housing, but we just
And this made it easier.
This doesn't make, this doesn't prevent that at all.
Yes, you asked why, that's not a debate, right? You asked why. I'm telling you.
The five-year doesn't give an incentive to do anything with the right
No, it doesn't. It's more the deferral than the other. It's the deferral piece, so.
Okay, back to the original motion to adopt the resolution. There's no more discussion.
Has amended.
Has amended. Rule call.
Candy Davis?
No.
Bronn?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes, 3 to 1. Thank you. Hopefully in five years, you can have something done with it or
If you know of a developer, we would love to talk to them and sell it, we've been trying, we really have been. So. Maybe next time you get a call from a developer, let's connect now. Good. Thank you.
Next item is personal appearances for non-agenda items. Anyone out there who wishes to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, let's move on to the minutes from July 19. Motion approved.
Second.
Any corrections or additions? Hearing none, rule call.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Leader reports.
Andy Finance. Yes, finance met this evening at 6:30. Motion to approve bills and payroll in the amount of $133,694.40.
Second.
Any questions on the bills? Hearing none, rule call.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
I'm a yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, motion to approve change of agent for 4/24 game date to Chenbridge Hotel.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, rule call.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We made a motion to table the event packet for Ice Cold Classics Car and Bike Show with fireworks until the next finance committee meeting, as the event organizer had changed the date of the event and more work needs to be done. Oh, that was my motion.
Oh, okay.
That's right, excuse me. Sorry. Okay, motion to approve subordination of Reinhardt loan for 203 South Main Street with the city agreeing to subordinate its loan to the new bank loan in the amount of approximately $1,873,000. And then the city released a $50,000 mortgage that is paid off.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, rule call.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Reinhardt, for, I'm sorry, it extended so long, so.
Well, it's good to hear it all again.
Okay. Thank you. That's it for finance.
Thank you, anything on the fire district?
Just briefly, the next board meeting is August 12. I have had discussions with Steve Sickering about this event packet that was supposed to be discussed tonight, so we'll continue to have those discussions, busy with calls and several fatalities, unfortunately, but very busy. So that's our first.
Thank you.
Fire district.
Next item is to discuss and consider transfer of 2020 general fund surplus funds to the capital projects fund.
H5 of your packet and the brief staff report on this practice has been going on since 2014. It was generally a practice that takes the general fund surplus that is created and transfers it to the capital projects fund so that it is available for projects that have a longer life. It's an effort to try to ensure that the funds are, nothing gets spent that isn't spent on something that really has a long-term benefit if there are any extra dollars available in the general fund. It has been successful in that it has created some funding available for those capital projects, as we were through a budget process. We'll be talking about those funds probably. So this year, the calculation based on the audited financial statements amount to be transferred is $46,419. And if it were transferred, the amount of money available in that fund would at that point be $239,146.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve transfer of 2020 general fund surplus funds to the capital projects fund which in the amount of $46,419.
So second. Get one of them?
Yeah, you guys are quick, so I got
Any discussion? Hearing none, rule call.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Here are all the persons in the staff report. The only thing I have is there's concerts in the park for the next two Wednesdays. And tomorrow night, you were, are you gonna cover that, or do you want me to cover that?
Either or. Tomorrow night's National Night Out at Brice Jacke Park, starting at 5 o'clock. It'll be a great time. It's a community event with law enforcement, and so be there, bring your family, friends. Should be pretty good.
I understand there's free food.
There is free food.
Yes.
And Sarah from Outreach will be, will be cooking. There'll be plenty of handouts by plenty of individuals, there'll be canine demonstration, there'll be two petting zoos, show horses from Amanda McElroy. And we're still keeping our fingers crossed that the Black Hawk helicopter will be making a special appearance. So be there at 5 o'clock, go until 8:00. And it looks like it's gonna be fantastic weather.
Yes. Thank you. And we'll see you tomorrow night. Let's see, I don't have anything else. Anybody else have anything?
I failed to put public works on under committee reports.
They didn't discuss anything anyways.
Oh.
Funny girl.
That's all right, we can discuss it, because it's on the agenda.
Well, you can have your best
Report, yeah, you can give it as a report.
I just want to ask, yeah, question regarding public works, is that, is that a statement or report?
I guess, let's try and see how far we go.
Okay, I guess, I was wondering, I was wondering, seeing this dead tree, the fellow Okay, I guess, I was wondering, I was noticing the, this dead tree that fell across the sidewalk behind Oak Tree.
Okay, first time I hear that, but okay.
Oh, I didn't know who cleared it off the sidewalk, I would have thought the city did that, but maybe they didn't.
It's entirely possible.
Okay.
My guys did that.
But I'm just curious, that property, I mean, the rest of that tree is still there, and it's quite dead, and it's, you know, it's right, it's not on the sidewalk anymore, but it's kind of a iso there, I'm just wondering, how do we?
We'll get a letter.
Is there anything else like that, now it's not private property now, but.
We'll get a letter to them.
Okay. I mean, yeah, the city cleaned it off, but still a fallen dead tree.
Thank you.
Shall I mention a couple of public works, since we did have a meeting?
Go ahead.
Okay, Candy, I'm gonna go. All right, we did have a meeting earlier today, and the public works approved, RDA already approved restripping of the downtown crosswalks, but public works extended it all the way out of Main and Lord to do the ladder type crossing, uh, striping of those. So we're gonna do Main, Lord, and also one up on Fulton on Catland. We discussed extra money that we had left over to do maintenance, street project maintenance, and some of the $46,000 we transferred just now was gonna go towards some of that, hopefully to get some down in the cigarette alley down there. Compost sites will be open, will be open during the weekends on November, weather permitting, and we're looking for volunteers for deer hunting weekend. And we also were appointed as the Dan County National Hazard Litigation Planning Commission, so further information on that coming out. That's about it.
Thank you. Who else have anything under staff reports? Otherwise, we can move on to the adjourned one there.
Nah, we don't have to do that, yes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Sarah does.
Second.
Roll call.
Paul, did you second?
Oh, Paul did second.
Bronn?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
I didn't second that.
Oh, Paul Davis?
Yes.
For Paul?
I'm just trying to get through.
He said yes.
Oh, Candy Davis?
Yes.
I'm having too much fun, so.
I know, right?
The motion did pass.
Oh, come on.
It was Paul's. Looking for a tie vote there. I want a card.